Good evening. My name is Cartney and I would like to welcome you to the Village of Orland Park Telephone Town Hall Meeting. If you would like to ask a question, press star three now to be connected. I'll be back on the line in just a bit to explain more about how to participate. But first, allow me to introduce your hosts, Mayor Dan McLaughlin and Trustee Jim Dodge. Mayor McLaughlin?
Good evening, Orland Park, and I'd like to thank you for taking time to join us tonight. On behalf of myself, interim Village Manager and Police Chief, Tim McCarthy, the Village Board and staff, I'd like to welcome all of you to the Village's third Telephone Town Hall Meeting. If you've been on before, you know the first one we concentrated on road work and road improvements, traffic congestion. The second Telephone Town Hall Meeting, we talked about police and public safety. So tonight, we, after having such a great response to those first two, that we thought we would talk about Village finances tonight, property taxes. But feel free to ask any questions on any topics, but we'd like to concentrate on finances tonight. So I'll take as many calls as I can during the hour and try my best to answer all of your questions. And remember, if you'd like to ask a question, press star three on your phone at any time during this hour. I'm joined tonight by Trustee Jim Dodge, who'd like to say a few words as well. Trustee Dodge?
Thanks, Dan. So a little bit of background for all the folks on the call. As Dan mentioned, we've done this three times and it's part of an ongoing effort that Dan and I have spearheaded and the full board supports, to make sure that we open up lines of communication so that we can hear your concerns. You know, listen, we care deeply about Orland Park and the residents of Orland Park. So we just wanted to make sure that we do as many possible things as we can so that we hear directly from you what's on your mind, the questions that you'd like answered. So as Dan said, you know, keep them coming. Tonight, we're going to focus on Village finances and property taxes. You know, we feel it's important for everyone on the call to understand exactly where things come from and then where we go and how we prioritize what we're doing. So with that, you know, again, we're thrilled that you joined us and keep the questions coming and we'll turn it back over to Cartney.
Thank you so much, Trustee Dodge. And again, in just a moment, we're going to open it up for questions. But first, I want to go over just a couple housekeeping items. If you'd like to ask a question, it's very easy. At any time, you can press star three on your touchtone phone and you'll be put in line to speak with one of our staff members. They'll pop on and take down your name, where you're calling from, and we'll try to get to your question as quickly as possible. The next time you hear your name by either me or the mayor, you'll be live to the entire conference and you'll be able to ask your question directly. If we're unable to get to your question this evening, you will have an opportunity to leave a voicemail at the end of the call and we'll get back to you just as quickly as possible. So again, that's press star three to ask a question this evening. And we'd like to go to our first question this evening is from Sue. Good evening, Sue. Are you with us?
Yes, I think that's me. Hi, um, is that me?
Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Oh, oh, hi. Um, I live in the Villa, um, in the Park Hill subdivision and we built our home thirty years ago. And every year, I've been calling about our streets. They're, they have not been repaved since the year 2000. And I've noticed that they've done, for example, centennial streets twice since the year 2000. Um, because my sister lives there, so I'm familiar with those streets. And then I've also noticed that they, last year, they did the Breckenridge subdivision, which is one of the newer subdivisions. And like I said, um, I call, I've been calling for years and, um, I just keep being told, oh, there's a company and, you know, they tell us what streets to do. It just doesn't seem fair. It's a pretty subdivision and they did come in and patch our streets, but that actually makes them look worse. And, um, last year, I was told they were going to get repaved in the year 2017. I called this year and now I'm told they're going to be reevaluated next year. And I, I, I'm just fed up.
Well, Sue, I'll tell you this. You said last time it was done was 2000 and typically, we try and get eighteen to twenty years out of, out of streets when they're paved. Because we have so many miles of street, we have a budget every year that we try and determine which streets are in the worst condition, the worst shape, and it has nothing to do with age as much as the actual condition. So the neighbor, friend or neighbor or sister, you said her streets were done more often. It could have been that their streets were beat up for some reason and in worse shape. But you are in the, Park Hill subdivision is in the five-year program, which means it'll be done in the next few years and that's standard for what our plans are. We try and get eighteen to twenty years out of every street in Orland. We can't afford to do them any faster or more than that and we try and concentrate on the worst, the worst-conditioned streets. But I can tell you, they will be, they will be, Park Hill will be done in the next couple of years.
Thank you, Mayor. What do you think about taking a poll question now?
Uh, sure. You know, we were talking about getting into, uh, talking about some finances tonight and the budget and all that. So before we even get into that, it might be interesting to see our listeners, which by the way, is in the neighborhood of seventeen hundred people at this point and climbing. Uh, so there's about seventeen hundred people on the line. So I'd like to ask this first question, just to see what everybody thinks and then we'll explain it a little bit more after we get the results. But what percentage of your property taxes goes to the Village of Orland Park? What percentage of your property taxes do you feel goes to the Village of Orland Park? If it's, if you think it's seven percent, press one. If it's, if you think it's seventeen percent of your property tax bill, press two. If you think it's as much as seventy percent, press three. And if you aren't sure, just press four. We're kind of curious to see what everybody thinks before we get into explaining some of it.
Exactly. And Mayor, let me just repeat that one more time. So the question is, what percentage of your property taxes does the Village of Orland Park receive? Press one for seven percent, press two for seventeen percent, press three for seventy percent, and press four if you don't know. And Mayor, while we're tabulating these results in real time, we've got John on the line with a question. Good evening, John. Are you with us?
John?
John, are you with us?
Hello?
John?
Hi, this is John Newt.
Hey, John. What's your question?
I wanted to ask about the Andrew Corporation property. What's our latest strategy on zoning or tax incentives? I'd rather see it be redeveloped for business or industry rather than a subdivision. But I really don't know what the Village's current plan is for the property.
Well, when Andrew first decided to sell that property, a national home builder came in with a beautiful plan for the north side of Hundred and Fifty-third to be larger homes and it was a very attractive layout, something I think Village residents would be proud of. The north, the south side of Hundred and Fifty-third, closer to the train tracks and the train station, was higher-density condos and townhomes, which you see going in now. The economy kind of collapsed right after Andrew sold the property. And the, the north side that you see vacant right now is, is really in limbo. The sou, the south side of Hundred and Fifty-third, obviously, a home builder came in and is building these townhomes that are tremendously successful. I don't disagree with you on the idea that a business would provide some jobs and a little better tax base, but it is zoned residential at this point. Although, because there is nothing commercial in that area, we have considered some commercial that would service just the area. Not, not big boxes or any of that type of business, but something that's more neighborhood-friendly and serves the neighborhood so people aren't always having to drive to La Grange Road for, for all their needs. So I see the future of that property as being a combination of residential as well as some commercial.
Thank you, Mayor. And John, that was a great question. And our poll results are in. Right now, for seven percent, sixty-four of you all answered. For seventeen percent, thirteen percent answered. For seventy percent, two of you all thought it was seventy. And twenty-one percent of you all didn't know. Mayor, would you like to comment on these results?
Well, I would. I'm, I'm happy to see that sixty-four percent of the people that answered picked seven percent because that is the amount of taxes that go to the Village out of your tax bill. Uh, to give you a real quick example, my own tax bill is about nine thousand dollars. So that means I'm only paying about six hundred and fifty dollars a year to the Village for all our services, police, parks and recreation, public works, all that. So, um, that's something we're very proud of and I think the fact that some people aren't sure or think it's a higher rate, um, I think we still need to do some more education and let people know where their tax, tax dollars are going. But I, I am pleased to see as enough, as many people realize what the actual number is.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, to ask Mayor McLaughlin a question, please press star three. Our next question is coming from Gina. Gina, are you with us? Gina?
Yeah, hi. My name is Tina with a T. Tina Adams.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And yes, I'm here.
What's your question, Tina?
Yes. Um, I have noticed, being an Orland Park resident for at least twenty years, and I do use the library a lot, which is fantastic, by the way. Um, when I'm driving, however, down Hundred Forty-seventh and I get to the T intersection where it crosses with Ravinia, north-south, I find that to be very difficult to turn north or south when you're at the T intersection. People are driving very fast and I feel that it's, I mean, I don't even turn either direction because you have to wait so long. So I just wanted to bring it up to the attention of the Village. And if I may add one more thing, um, um, being a very conscientious driver, in this town, it seems like everybody is texting. It is ridiculous. Um, you know, close call accidents with these people. They just don't know what they're doing. And a lot of times, I'll honk my horn and I'll say like, no texting and I'll, you know, they'll show me a certain sign or whatever. You know, they're not happy. I think the Village could make stand to be, increase revenue if the police would start writing tickets for text.
Yeah, they, they do write some ticket, uh, they do write a considerable amount of tickets in that area. But let me just tell you, you might be interested to know, you're really referring to Hundred Forty-ninth and Ravinia. Hundred Forty-seventh is where the Village Hall is. So Hundred Forty-seventh and Ravinia near the Village Hall, the plans are in, the engineering is being completed for, uh, making that intersection a roundabout, which we think will help serve the traffic there. Hundred Forty-ninth and Ravinia where you're talking about, uh, as it, as it turns out, we're in the process of taking traffic counts there now to see what, what our next step is there. Because we know there's an issue and we know there's a lot more traffic. Uh, I'll tell you what I think has gone on is because La Grange Road's been under construction for a while, more and more people have found Ravinia and are using it. So it's become a little more of an issue than it was, say, two or three years ago. But we are taking a traffic count at that intersection, uh, right now. So we are looking at some improvements and Hundred Forty-seventh will be a roundabout. So I think that might help smooth traffic in that area as well. So it'll be interesting over the next couple of years to see how traffic develops on Ravinia when La Grange Road actually opens up and is fully operational.
Thanks so much, Mayor, and that was a great question. Uh, our next question comes from Michael. Michael, good evening. Are you with us?
Yes, I am.
What's your question, Michael?
Okay, I would like to know the percentage of, uh, occupancy on the Ninety-seven-Fifty project and are the taxpayers still obligated for sixty million dollars? I believe the number was that came to mind, or has some of that been recouped?
Well, we are, we are in the process of recovering our investment in that, that building now. That building has two hundred and ninety-five units and it's over ninety-four percent occupied. So it's extremely successful. I will tell you that that, the sixty million dollars you're talking about was part of a very complicated financial package to make that project work and, and work in the favor of the Village. Um, there are certain waterfalls, we refer to it, certain steps that gain us more share of the profits of that building, such as their occupancy. When it reached ninety-two percent, uh, we started sharing in the profits of the building. When the rents per square foot went up to a certain amount, we would share in that profit as well. And, and the buildings, in the short time it's been there, the rents have already been raised twice. But right now, we get about a million and a seven, a million and seven, uh, a year in interest payments on that loan and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year annually in excess cash part of the sharing of those profits. So we're actually doing very well on that building and, uh, very thankful. But it's, uh, it's turned out to be a big success.
Thanks so much. That was a great question. If you want to ask the Mayor a question, please press star three. Again, that's star three on your phone. And our next question comes from Mark. Good evening, Mark. Are you with us?
I, I am. Your Honor, the Village gets seven cents out of every property tax dollar. Is that consistent with the ratio for other communities in the area or are we unique?
Uh, I would say we're unique. I, I don't know that there's too many communities that, uh, that have that low a tax rate for their residents. Uh, now, I will say, I will say a lot of that is because of the sales tax we receive from our tremendous amount of retail.
What do we do about improving this in terms of the return to the, uh, property owner?
Well, we're doing something, we're doing something no other community does, which is rebating property taxes every year as much as we can afford to rebate. I mean, the, the public also demands an awful lot of services from us and an awful lot of projects. So we spend an awful lot of money of our budget on road improvements and, uh, parks and recreation. Uh, we have probably one of the bigger and definitely one of the best police departments in the suburbs, which costs money. So I think we provide, uh, an abundance of service and excellent service for a very little part of your tax bill. So I think if anything, if there's any way to try and, uh, improve your situation, it's to watch the school districts and the townships and the county because they all are a big part of your tax bill. Um, we, by the way, over the last eleven, thirteen years, eleven of those years, we've rebated a total of over thirty-six million dollars back to residents, even in light of the fact that our rate is only seven cents on the dollar.
Thanks so much. All great points, Mayor, and that was a wonderful question. Again, to ask a question, please press star three. Next, we've got Carol on the line. Good evening, Carol. Are you with us?
I am.
What's your question?
Well, my question was, uh, in the Orland Park Prairie, there was a statement that the township residents want to leave Cook County and go to Mokina. I think, I can't understand how maybe a dozen people would have had that much to say and maybe swayed, tried to sway the board to put this on, on an election. Because right, just previously, you stated that, and we have always received money back in, in Orland. Mokina is kind of expensive. Their taxes are high. And in Will County, I don't think we'd receive what we get from Orland if we went into, became part of Mokina. What's your answer on that?
Well, first of all, I agree with you on all your points. Uh, I, I never heard individual people asking that question. So I don't know where they came from. I don't know how many there were. But apparently, the Township Board agreed to put it on the, uh, the ballot as a referendum question. So the general public has the opportunity to vote against that idea. But there's so many other steps that will probably make that highly unlikely anyway. The County Board has to agree and there's so many other steps. It's, it's probably unlikely that it'll ever happen. But I also agree with your point. Will County's taxes on residents is considerably higher than Cook County's taxes on residents. It's the reverse for business. But in terms of residential, Will County's taxes, not just Mokina, but Will County's taxes are considerably higher. And I personally am a big believer in the fact that Will County has, has grown so much in the last ten or fifteen years and they haven't kept up with their infrastructure. So I think their taxes will continue to rise to help pay for the infrastructure they need to catch up with the businesses they've approved and, and projects they've approved. So...
Yeah, and Dan, to add to that point, one of the things that, uh, that Orland's unique in terms of compared to Will County, they don't have the kind of, the property tax coming from the retail. So a big factor for why we can keep our portion of your property tax bill so low and have done over a number of years, plus all the rebates, is the strength of our, of our professional services. There's a lot of doctors and dentists and medical services and professional services in town. And we've got a great retail base. And some number of years back, Dan and I talked about, you know, something that sounds a little strange at first, the experience economy. You know, as, as we think about the growth in companies like Amazon, that has an impact on your retail tax base. So we're always mindful and that's one of the reasons why Dan puts in so much time trying to make sure that we kind of balance out our economic development to offset some of those effects.
Absolutely, absolutely. So you, uh, you had some great points.
Thank you both so much for that. Next, we've got Sean on the line. Good evening, Sean. Are you with us?
Yes.
What's your question this evening?
Uh, I'm just wondering when La Grange Road's going to be done and if the cops are going to start cracking down on people texting and driving and talking on their cell phones.
Well, I, I mean, I know the police do ticket on that and I think there's so many people that text and, and drive, uh, with the, with the cellphone. Uh, I don't know that you, how, how hard it will be to get as many people as we'd like to, but I know the police are writing tickets on that. La Grange Road has been going on for a while and I appreciate everybody's patience. Uh, it's unfortunate that over the years, La Grange Road was broken up into several projects. So, uh, each project took a certain amount of time. But this last project is about done and it was a hundred million dollar project, very big project. Uh, all lanes will be open, including all the turning lanes, by Thanksgiving. Uh, the, the median plantings and landscaping on the sides of the street, the, some of the sidewalks and that kind of thing will continue to go into next year, a good part of next year. But the road work, the road work, if you, if you notice, is actually done. It's just that they have to open up the lanes and remove the barricades and finish some of their, their, uh, landscape issues that they think they can get done for this year. But all the lanes will be open and running by Thanksgiving. And that's something, I'll tell you, there's two things. We've always worked with IDOT to try and keep them to have two lanes open all the time during this whole project, which is what we started with. So they've done a good job of that and there hasn't been too many extra lane closures. Um, uh, so traffic has still flowed fairly well. It's just very confusing with all the barricades up. But, uh, almost done, almost done. By Thanksgiving, we should be able to use everything.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Again, press star three to ask the Mayor a question. And right now, we've got Linda on the line. Good evening, Linda.
My name is Linda Shinor. I'm a proud owner of a home in Orland Park for the last fourteen years. And I love it here and I thank you for all your hard work. Um, my question is, a few years back, it's been a few years, getting the Neighborhood Watch restarted, I enjoyed that. It's not that I have any problems in my area, but it was nice to know what was going on and the police officers in our area and meeting not only my neighbors but people in my whole area range to share notes on what's going on in the area. And this is B2.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to just say real quick, I, uh, the police chief is with us tonight and he's very anxious to answer that. But I will, I will add that I've been in numerous, uh, uh, BEAT meetings and picnic in the park or, or, uh, hot dogs in the park that the police do. They do a great job of getting around. We have so many neighborhoods, I think they get a good number of them done each year and then rotate. So, but Tim, do you want to get into that a little bit?
Yeah, well, thanks, Linda. I live in B2 also, so it's very important to me too. Um, I, I don't know if you're talking about, if you have a Neighborhood Watch in your neighborhood. Those meetings are organized by the residents and you have your regular meetings and when you have them, the police are invited. Uh, the second thing is the BEAT meetings that we host once a year and usually it's at Prairie School over in B2. And we have those in the spring and it generally well-attended, sometimes as many as a hundred people. Uh, and we also have, you know, numerous other community policing strategies out there as well where we have the police in the park, as the Mayor mentioned, the cookouts and so forth. Uh, but if you're going to have any type of neighborhood meeting, Linda, please invite the police and our BEAT officer and sergeant will be there. And I attend many of them myself. And, uh, or stop by the police station. And of course, we have National Night Out and other things like that where we're looking for participation from the residents. So anything we can do to come out and let you know what's going on, we're certainly happy to do. And just let us know when.
Well, thank you so much for that answer. And we've got a lot of questions to get to this evening. David, Kathy, we're trying to get to as quickly as possible. Again, press star three to ask the Mayor a question. And right now, Satish is on the line. Good evening, Satish.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, I, my name's Satish Chen. I live in Ashley Oak subdivision and our street address is one-four-three-two-zero Oakwood Court. And my question is, I have been trying to get my street light fixed for the last two and a half years and I have reached to the Public Works Department, Mayor's Office and everyone I could think of and street light is still not working. I was told it's going to be working soon. They are in touch with Commonwealth Edison. But I think it's a safety issue for citizens that street light should be on and it shouldn't take that long to have the street light working.
You know, I, I agree with you and our Public Works Director's here tonight and I, he was just reminding me how many times we've called Commonwealth Edison, uh, to get out there into that area. I don't know why they are, I don't know why they're not responding, but I will guarantee you, I will call them tomorrow and, uh, uh, put some pressure on because that is ridiculous for that to go on that long. So I, I apologize for that. Uh, let me put a little personal, uh, uh, time and pressure on Edison into that issue.
Yeah, Dan, it's, uh, it, uh, and just for Satish, it's, it's James Dodge, the trustee. So we have a new position in the Village, you know, uh, the Mayor and the full board supported creating a technology office so we can use information technology to better do all of these types of things. So you're going to see from the Village going forward, much faster, I would say, response times. We can't guarantee when ComEd's going to come out and do their thing or IDOT's going to finish their work. But we, the Village, we're making sure that we're going to stay better in touch with everybody that reaches the Village, however you do it. An email, we're going to work on, on applications, whether you do a phone call, that we log in and we track it and we do a, we do a better job of responding to these things. So that's certainly one of the things we're, we're working on.
Great.
Thank you both so much. Right now, we've got Greg on the line. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening, hi. Um, my question is basically, we did get, well, at least I got the mailer explaining already that our taxes amount to, are seven percent taxes. So I, I think you were kind of setting us up for getting that answer right in the first place. My question is, is this call primarily a kind of a forewarning that within the next coming years, that percentage needs to go up? And seeing as no other percentage is likely to be going down, is that just a roundabout way of, are you basically giving us the heads up that, hey, our taxes are going to be going up here in Orland Park here pretty soon because you're paying such a low percentage right now?
You know what? It's, it's, it's more a case of bragging, I guess. Uh, we're happy that we've been able to, we've been able to keep the, the, uh, the tax levy as low as we have in Orland Park. I can't predict the future. We're doing our best to hold the line. Uh, your, your total tax bill will no doubt go up because there's so many different taxing agencies, taxing bodies that are part of your tax bill. But our part of your tax bill, we are doing the best we can to, uh, uh, not only keep the rate low and keep it at that seven cents or so per, uh, per dollar, but we're also trying, for eleven of the last thirteen years, uh, trying to rebate as much as we can to, to help our citizens. Um, so I'm, it's, and no, this is in no way a forewarning of what's coming up, but I can't predict the future either. I mean, uh, back in, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that, uh, when the economy, uh, took a major hit, those two years, we kept our balance, our budget balanced and we, um, continued to provide the services we, we, you have come to expect. But those two years, we did not do the rebate. So we didn't raise the taxes, but we didn't do the rebate for those two years and I think everybody understood why. But to rebate over thirty-six million dollars over the last thirteen years is something I don't think there's any other town and state that can claim. And I will also add that Orland Park, uh, for the last five years, we've kept the levy flat in spite of the fact that pensions and costs in general are going up. I think we've done a pretty good job of, uh, we've, we've kept the levy flat for the last five years. So it's, this, uh, our educational program and our talk tonight is probably more about our pride and what we've done than it is forewarning the future.
Well, thanks so much for that explanation, Mayor. Nick, Dan, Kathy, Sue, we're trying to get to your questions as quickly... to get to your questions as quickly as possible, but Sandy's on the line right now. Sandy, good evening.
Yes, good evening, and, uh, I wanna thank the mayor and everybody for the wonderful job they're doing. I love living in Orland Park, and actually, my question and the others I thought of have already been answered. So, I'll just say goodnight, and you could go on to the next person.
Well, all right, but I will throw in real quick, your question that, that I see in front of me was, will the, will the seven cents paid to the village fluctuate? Of course, it'll fluctuate a little bit every year, uh, but that is what we are right now, uh, receiving from you. But based on budgets and assessed valuation, all the other things that go into it, it may fluctuate a little bit, but, uh, we're doing the best we can with, uh, and keeping our costs down.
Thanks so much, Mayor. And then now-
You think it's time for another poll question, or?
Yeah, poll.
It is, it is. Um, would you like to read it, or would you like me to?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, well, so our next poll question, and we need you all to use your phones to respond, is what would you like to see more of in Orland Park? Press one for more recreational opportunities, press two for more special events, press three for more open lands, press four for more transportation options. Again, the question is, what would you like to see more of in Orland Park? Press one for recreational opportunities, press two for more special events, press three for more open lands, press four for more transportation options. And Mayor, while we're tabulating those results in real time, Amelia's on the phone with a question. Amelia, are you with us?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor and everybody that's there this evening. This is a great forum. Uh, I have some concerns about the crime that's, uh, happening in our, our community. I'm especially concerned about the Orland Mall. I will tell you, while I can only speak for myself, I can also tell you that, uh, there are many, many of us that choose not to shop at Orland specifically in the evening times and/or on weekends, um, because of the teenage crowd that's coming in there, not specifically to the mall, but also to the other stores in the areas. Um, I love open land. I've always pushed for that. Um, I feel as though Orland Park, which was once a nice, comfortable community, has become some sort of a Schaumburg, and I, uh, would like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, you know, I, I will gladly let the police chief jump in here too, but I will tell you, the, based on FBI statistics, uh, Orland Park was the seventh safest community in Illinois, uh, this last year. So, uh, there's, there's always perceptions of things going on that, uh, but the actual crime statistics, uh, show otherwise, show that we're one of the safest communities in the state. Actually, by FBI numbers, if you compare it around the country, we're one of the safest communities in the country. Tim, do you have, uh, any comments on that?
Well, uh, let me speak specifically about the mall. Um, we assign police there almost full-time at the mall. The mall's security is fairly sophisticated and has people there. And in the holiday period of time, we have a large number of police working the mall, both in uniform and undercover. Now, is there crime at the mall? Yeah, there's retail thefts, and those have been occurring at the mall since the day it was opened. And they're not any greater now than they were before, and our apprehension rate is very high, probably over fifty to sixty percent. So statistically, there is no more crime at the mall than there was before, uh, but almost all of the crime that is there is, uh, property crime via thefts and frauds and not violent crime. Now, the mall has a very aggressive policy also on banning people, and many teenagers that come in and act up and create a scene, and they ban them, and we assist them. If they come back, we arrest them and charge them with trespass. But while there might be more retail thefts from time to time, we are not seeing either at the mall or across Orland Park, a higher rate of violent crime. Uh, we have seen an increase in thefts, both retail thefts and other thefts, and a slight increase in burglaries this year, uh, but not violent crime.
Yeah, I, I will add that, uh, based on our statistics, crime, uh, numbers have actually gone down for the fifth year in a row to, and they're already low numbers to begin with, but they've gone down five years in a row.
It's been five years in a row, and, and they can't go down much lower than they are. Uh, we are, many of the other shopping malls have closed. Uh, uh, Lincoln Mall and others are somewhat distressed, and we're just getting more and more people at our mall, which is, overall, is a good thing. They're spending money. But I assure you, we're aware of the issues going on at the mall, and we'll put every, whatever resources we have to put there to ensure safety for all shoppers.
Well, thank you both so much, and glad that we can get that out in the air. Again, we've got a lot of questions, but first, Mayor, I'd like to get to our poll results, and they are that fifteen percent of you on the line with us would like to see more recreational opportunities, twenty-six percent would like to see more special events, thirty-one percent would like to see more open lands, and twenty-eight percent of you all on our phone right now would like to see more transportation options. Mayor, would you like to comment on these results?
Well, I mean, it's, uh, those are all priorities of the villages, so, uh, I'm happy to see the, in, in essence, we have support on those types of issues, 'cause there's a lot of towns that don't have things like an open lands program. Uh, so, we are proud of that. And special events, uh, I've been mayor for a long time, and there was a time where Orland Days and, uh, you know, one or two other events a year was about all you had here. Um, and, uh, now there's, there's so many programs every month that, uh, we have to put out a booklet to, to let everybody know. So, we're happy about the special events and the family-oriented programs we've been putting on. Um, we're very proud of that, so I'm, I'm glad to see that there's so much support to, to continue those, uh, priorities.
Yeah. Hey, hey, Dan, so I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we had record attendance at, uh, at the Taste of-
Taste of Orland.
And, uh, that's one of the things that the, the board, um, is, is committed to do, is those types of things go to making a community a community. So, as we, as we do these, um-
Types of different programs.
Let us know, right? I mean, anytime you'd like, you can, you know, contact the village or send an email to the mayor's office, because we look at all of this stuff to do exactly what we did here, which is, we wanna hear from you, what you care about, so that we can, uh, we can execute those, uh, programs. So, definitely keep telling us what you think.
Yeah. And before we get into another question, if I, if you don't mind, uh, I'd just like to throw out a couple of bullet points on our finances, because as we said, we try and concentrate tonight on finances and the budget. And there's a lot of questions, uh, that I see on the board that are all over the place. So, I just wanna mention that we, we are proud of the fact that we've balanced our budget for the last twenty-three years in a row, and our tax levy has remained flat for the last five years, like I mentioned. The seven percent, uh, uh, seven cents on each dollar is, is a pretty low tax rate for all the improvements, all the things we, we, uh, do for our residents in Orland Park. And I'll add that we don't have a park district, uh, in Orland Park. A lot of communities, in addition to their municipal taxes, they are also paying a separate, um, um, park district tax, which we don't have. All of our parks and recreation are part of our village budget. In the last twenty-three years, we've spent five hundred million dollars on road work and public improvements. Now, that's, that's, uh, that's not just our money, it's state and federal money, but that's how much work has been going on in the last twenty-some years in Orland Park. Um, uh, our bond ratings double A with both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Uh, I, I really could go on. I've got numerous bullet points here. We're, we're very happy and proud of the fact that we've kept, uh, a, a pretty tight rein on, uh, on year dollars, and, uh, we think we're spending them wisely. And I just wanted to get a couple of those points out, because I know a lot of the questions are, uh, on other issues as well. So-
Mayor, thank you so much. And for all those on the line, press star three to ask the mayor a question. Right now, we've got Carolyn on the line. Good evening, Carolyn.
Good evening, Mayor. I would just like to, um, compliment you on the great job that you've been doing for our community. Uh, my husband and I are residents for over twenty years, and we live, live on the east side of the town, and I am a regular walker. I walk actually on a Hundred and Forty-third, and my route is from Eightieth Avenue towards LaGrange Road. And been walking this way a long time. These, this, um, on a Hundred and Forty-third, the sidewalks are very unlevel, and the landscaping, um, the small trees are broken and the branches are hanging. And I just was wondering, what is the plan once LaGrange Road, um, is complete, and the gateway, and the east-west gateway, um, from Eightieth Avenue in, towards, uh, LaGrange Road, and if there is any plan?
Well, there's, we, there's always plans. We, we, we do a lot of, uh, long-range planning in the village, and, uh, I think that's why we, we, uh, are getting, uh, a lot of projects done. But let me try and answer that as quick as I can. Uh, the LaGrange Road project, the village put in, uh, about fifteen million dollars into the LaGrange Road project, and it was mainly to make it, uh, look the way I think we all expect, uh, LaGrange Road corridor to look. Uh, the landscaping, the brick sidewalks, the planted medians. So, once this project is done, the money we've been putting into that for the last few years will help us add to our neighborhood street improvement program. But this year's budget, which we will be approving shortly, does include more money for neighborhood street improvements, uh, and sidewalk improvements than it has in the past, so we feel good about that. But in your particular area that you were asking about, it, it's funny you mentioned the trees, because I just called Public Works, uh, a week or two ago and mentioned that, that I, that I noticed a number of those, uh, small trees that either, uh, look like they're dying off or were hit by a car or something, uh, and need to be replaced. But the sidewalks, I think we're gonna have to, uh, get some specific, uh, somebody out there to specifically look for the sections that may have, uh, buckled or, or sunk, because, uh, we did do a number of sidewalk connections and repairs in that area, uh, over the last year or two, and, uh, if there's some we missed, or maybe a, a couple of blocks we haven't gotten to yet, we'll, we will no doubt be doing those this spring. But we, I'll, I'll make sure our Public Works Department looks for that area of a Hundred and Forty-third. But in terms of east-west corridors, once LaGrange Road's done, as you can see, if you go west of LaGrange Road on a Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street, that is under construction, so that is being done as well. And then engineering, phase-two engineering is, uh, being completed on a Hundred Forty-third Street west of, uh, Southwest Highway. So, now that LaGrange Road is about done, a Hundred Forty-third and a Hundred Fifty-Ninth will get more of our attention in addition to the neighborhood, uh, uh, streets and sidewalks.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Right now, we've got Deena on the line. Good evening, Deena.
Hello, um, thank you for, uh, letting me join. Um, I'm really excited to be a resident of Orland Park. I've been here since two thousand five. Um, and I was very eager to see the new downtown area be developed. I think the area, the, the quadrangle there at a Hundred Forty-third and, uh, LaGrange is, is turning out to be just beautiful. But I thought it was going to be more of a family-oriented type of development, and I was wondering why it was decided to build the huge University of Chicago ambulatory center there. I mean, it's a wonderful facility, don't get me wrong. It's nice to have that type of healthcare in our neighborhood, but particularly at that part of the village, I, I wondered why there, and, and then does that mean-
Yeah.
-our downtown area is moving?
Uh, no, no. Uh, well, first of all, what we consider downtown is a Hundred and Forty-third Street, I mean, north of a Hundred Forty-third Street, both sides of LaGrange, as well as south of a Hundred Forty-third Street to the Village Center. We see that whole area as, uh, as our downtown. The center or core that we're, that we own the property in, that triangle, uh, we're trying to develop, from the beginning, for, for twenty years, we've talked about it being a mixed-use development, a pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use development. Now, when I say mixed-use, a mixed-use of residential as well as office, entertainment, restaurants. So, an office building like a University of Chicago is actually a perfect fit, because it will bring the kind of traffic into that area that will support several nice restaurants in the area, uh, potentially theaters and some other entertainment, uh, venues in that area. So, you need the traffic to support the other, uh, the other parts of the, the, uh, project. So, it's actually a good fit. Um, they will be bringing numerous, uh, patients a year with, with visitors and guests that, uh, will help support the businesses in that area. So, it's always meant to be a mixed-use development, and it, the University of Chicago is a perfect fit for our long-range plan.
Deena, that was a great question, and thanks, thanks, Mayor. Right now, we've got Maria on the line. Good evening, Maria.
Hello, Mayor, and thank you for having this phone forum. Um, it's so nice to be able to ask questions. I live in the Eagle Ridge subdivision one area, and my question to you is, I had read that they're going to make your position full-time. Are they going to do that, uh, when? And when they do it, will you take it? And then the last part of the question is, will any part-time positions that currently support the mayor now be eliminated?
Well, let me, I appreciate the question. Yeah, this is, uh, very recent. Um, the, the idea of making the mayor's position full-time has been a discussion. It's actually going, uh, that goes back to the days of Fred Owens. So, for a number of years, this has been, uh, discussed, just because of the size of the village, the grow, the growth, and the demands that, uh, are put on the, uh, the village board and myself. So, the, when I, when the finance chairman first approached me, uh, not too long ago that they wanted to bring up the idea, it was because the village was considering hiring two new positions based on a metric study that was done a number of years ago, that recommended that we hire a second assistant village manager and an economic development coordinator. The, uh, chairman of finance committee, uh, brought up the idea to the committee that instead of hiring those two positions, which would, with benefits, probably be in the three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand dollar range, that we add those duties, uh, to the village president's position and, uh, and pay an, an adequate salary for that position. Um, so, it is saving, uh, the hiring of a couple of positions. In addition, there is, uh, uh, my own, the salary I get now would obviously be part of it. So, um, I think all in all, the, uh, the, the savings to the village, but still getting the kind of service we expect, um, it, it certainly deserves some discussion. Now, the board hasn't voted on it yet, though. The board hasn't voted on it yet, and if the board approves it at the next board meeting, it wouldn't take effect until the next, uh, election. It's not something that, uh, that you can do in your term.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's Jim Dodge, and that's one of the things that I wanted to build on here. I've, I've known Dan for, for many years, and there's no question in my mind that this is a, a, a smart move for, for Orland Park. He's, he's gonna put the time and energy, and he's always got the, uh, the passion. And as, as a board member, when we looked at all the things that we need to get done, and all the good reasons to have, quite frankly, Orland's best cheerleader out there doing great business development for us, this makes total sense. And then, you know, as Dan just alluded to, one of the things that we're, we're thinking through very carefully is state law, um, uh, has something to say about exactly how we do this. So, we're being, you know, thoughtful. We're gonna do this in the right way, and we're gonna see how it works. We're all expecting it to, to work out really well. And then, as Dan said, it only starts, you know, after the election, so the people of Orland Park can, can weigh in on this issue, and then going forward, we'll, we'll see how well it works. So, I, you know, I think all things considered, this, this will be a, a good thing for us.
Yeah, I'd, I'll just add one, uh, personal, uh, uh, perspective. Uh, you know, I've, I've had a vision for a long time of how I see different aspects of the village growing and improving. Uh, and we're in the middle of many important projects. There's many goals that we have, uh, as a board, and, and quite frankly, when the, uh, chairman of the finance committee raised the issue and, uh, asked me what I thought, I was, uh, excited about the possibility of being able to spend more time, achieve, trying to achieve those goals and seeing some of these projects, uh, through to fruition. So, we'll see what happens, but, uh, appreciate the question.
Thank you, Mayor McLaughlin, and thank you, Trustee George. We've got a lot of questions still in the queue. Press star three to ask the mayor a question. And right now, we're gonna take a question from Kelly. Good evening, Kelly. Are you with us? Kelly?
Yeah, that's me.
Hi, Kelly, good evening.
Hi. The lady told me I couldn't ask my question, but I'll ask it anyways.
Please do.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I was calling in regards, I've called the school dis, I live on the crossroad right on the corner of Peachtree and Sunrise. My house is always all the bus stops. For the last month, there are two buses, one from Center School, one from Liberty. They both get, drop off kids at the same time. I cannot tell you how many times that there are cars that are just driving right through, even though the buses have their little stop signs out. Um, right, and I was wondering, I called the school, I'm like, can't we have, like, a police come, spot check, to start giving these cars tickets? Because I'm like, there are literally eight kids that get off at the bus stop every day. There are no sidewalk on the one street of Sunrise, so they literally, in the meantime, we cross diagonally on the road. I'm like, one of these days, one of these children are gonna get hit. And literally, me as a mom, I'm standing in the middle of the road with my hands out, trying to stop the idiots from driving around, and they still drive around me as a mother.
Well, I, I appreciate the question. I, uh, even though it's a school district question, so to speak, we take, uh, the, the safety of our kids very seriously. In school zones and bus stops, we take them very seriously, and- And, and fortunately, tonight, uh, the police chief is here with us. I don't know if you have any comments, Tim, but I know we will certainly, uh, highlight that particular intersection, uh, or area tomorrow.
We'll have a traffic detail out. I already wrote it down. Uh, we'll have a traffic detail out there tomorrow morning. Sadly, as you probably know, most of these people are our residents, uh, that are doing this, not people from outside the community. But we will be out there tomorrow on a traffic detail, and we will start enforcement there right away. And in, in the future, don't call the school district. Please call the police department. That's our responsibility, wherever they have the bus stops at. It's our responsibility to ensure, uh, safety for motorists, and we'll be out there tomorrow.
Thank you both so much. Right now, let's take a question from David. Good evening, David.
I'm here. Hello?
What's your question this evening?
How you doing?
Okay, I'm pretty good. Uh, my question is, uh, the other ninety-three percent that, uh, is not, uh, part of the tax dollars that runs the village, uh, what percentage is, uh, the, uh, educational budget? And how do we relate with, um, like, Palos and Tinley Park and other communities in the area?
Yeah, you know, it's just, in rough numbers, um, about sixty-four percent of your tax bill goes to the schools. Uh, but then there's some other districts that make up about sixteen percent. The MWRD, uh, Library District, Township, and Cook County. And then even the Fire District has, uh, oh, I think they're about thirteen percent. So, those are the different taxing districts, uh, in addition to the village. And, you know, they all have board meetings that, uh, sometimes would be interesting to go to. And, uh, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, how they compare to other communities. I know our village, we, we pay attention more to the village, uh, taxes and how we compare to other villages. I don't know how the school districts and Fire District compare to other communities, but that's how the tax bill's broken up.
Thanks, Mayor. Right now, we've got Cindy on the line with a construction question. Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening, hi, I appreciate you taking my call. I was just, I live in Mallard Landing Town Homes at a Hundred and Sixty-seventh and a Hundred and Fourth. And I was just wondering, is a Hundred and Fourth Street gonna be open before winter?
Uh, it, it will not. It should be the s- spring of next year that, uh, that that should be completed. And opened.
Yeah, Cindy, it's, uh, it's Jim Dodge. I usually, I used to go up a Hundred and Fourth to a Hundred and Fifty-Ninth. So, there's a whole bunch of us in, in that part of Orland that are anxious to get this done.
Definitely, and let's keep going. Right now, we've got a question from Elizabeth. Elizabeth, are you on the line with us?
I am.
Good evening, Elizabeth, what's your question?
Uh, my question is, um, I know you were talking about the widening of a Hundred and Forty-third a little earlier. You mentioned that it was in phase two, and I recall reading that. Um, but I was wondering, when can we expect that it will be worked on or completed between Wolf Road and Will Cook Road?
Uh, I will, I will tell you that when I said phase two, I meant phase-two engineering. So, phase-two engineering is kind of the final engineering that identifies what right-of-way you need and, and where the road's actually gonna go, uh, and some, some particular information. But the next big, there, there's two, two more steps. The first step after the phase-two engineering is right-of-way acquisition. What other, whatever phase-two engineering determine needs to be bought, uh, to, to give us room to widen the road, that's the next phase. And we do not have funding for that yet. And the next phase after that would be construction. So, this is a state route. So, we are constantly lobbying the state for funds for these different projects. We actually lobbied the state for more than twenty years to get LaGrange Road done, and it took this long. I don't expect that with a Hundred and Forty-third, because the village has put in, uh, a share of money for phase-one and phase-two engineering, so they know how serious we are. And we've worked well with IDOT in the past, because we've paid, uh, portion of the project. A lot of communities can't do that. Uh, but there's no funding in, in the state's budget at this particular time to complete that, but we are pushing it every day with our state representatives and with our contacts with IDOT.
Thank you, Mayor, and let's jump to one more question. Right now, we've got Bonnie on the line. Good evening, Bonnie. Bonnie, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Good evening, how are you? What's your question?
Um, yes, I just kind of wondered, um, with these nine-one-one calls, um, there are calls that are made from people, and I do see that there are a lot, a lot of police cars and, um, fire departments, and then they, they just pull away, and there's nobody in the car or no one in the police cars or the, the, there's nothing going on. Um, what's going on with these calls?
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what-
Uh, I, I, this is, uh, Chief McCarthy, uh, Bonnie, and I'm not sure exactly, um, what you're referring to is, if it's a police call, uh, we normally send one car unless a second is required. Fire's a little bit different story. They send, uh, on almost any call, they send a minimum of an ambulance and a fire truck, and then occasionally, they get backup from other communities. But, uh, normally, we don't send more than one car unless the situation calls for it. If you could, uh, give me any specifics, I could actually look it up and see what the response was. Um, but our response time is very quick, uh, less than three minutes on every call, which we're very proud of. But we only send the resources we need and no more typically, because if we send two or three police cars there, there's two other beats that are not being covered at that moment. So, we're very conscientious about the use of our resources. So, if you could provide us with a specific on that, I can actually, I'll look it up, and we'll be happy to get back to you on exactly what happened and why it happened.
Um, am I live right now?
Yeah, you're good.
So, I will, I will just tell everybody that's on the line, we have had in the neighborhood of twenty-four to twenty-five hundred people on the line all night, which is, which is outstanding. But there are, there are about two thousand people that want to ask a question. So, we're not gonna get to everybody's questions, but I do see a lot of them up on the board, and we do, uh, have an opportunity to leave a message or leave a question, and we will do our best to get back to people after tonight. I mean, we can only answer so many, and we really appreciate everybody's participation. Uh-
But Dan, why don't we do a poll?
Why don't we do the last poll question?
Well, let's do the final poll, where we-
Yeah.
Let, let yes or no, how are we doing? Do we want to do more of these?
Yeah, so right now, the, we'd like to ask our listening audience for one final poll question, and that is, do you believe that these telephone town halls are beneficial and have value? Again, do you believe these telephone town halls are beneficial and have value? Press one for yes, press two for no. And then, before I turn it over to Mayor McLaughlin for closing remarks, I'd like to remind everyone that if we weren't able to get to your question or comment this evening, please remain on the phone, and at the end of the call, you can leave a voicemail.